The mayor and board of all on March the 18th, 2025. He has joined me in prayer and pledge.
Heavenly fathers, we come to you today. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and gather and do the business of the citizens that we've been elected to represent. Father, we ask that you'll, we thank you, Father, for your mercy and your blessings, your grace. We ask that you'll guide us in those decisions we make, give us the wisdom to make the right decision. We ask that you bless all of our employees, our city, our county, and our state, and our union, Father. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Everybody, a roll call. Patrick.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
Donald.
Here.
Here.
Mikey.
Here.
Tim, Tim and Angie, and Bernie is out sick tonight, so he won't be able to join us with his presence or on the phone. Public hearings, we have, we picked up the list and brought it up, and you do?
For public comments, yes.
Public comments, I say public hearings, we don't have, the public comments, and we have one, two, three, four, five public comments.
And then you've got the lady that originally got on the agenda.
Right, yeah, but she'll be, she's on the agenda.
Oh, she actually signed too, so one of those five is her.
Okay.
Can we just move all that to agenda?
No, no.
We gotta do it now.
I'm gonna take them right now and follow him in the time limit on this.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay, we're gonna call up the first person, you can come up to the microphone, speak into the mic, speak loudly, so we'll be able to pick it up with our, our voice system, go with our video camera.
Susan Carson.
Susan.
Carson.
Carson. Susan Carson, if you will come forward.
I thought you were gonna call Ms. McIntosh first.
I can't hear you, hon, you gotta come to the microphone, speak into the microphone.
I thought you were gonna call Ms. McIntosh first.
Now, you're on the public comments.
Yeah.
So your, your comments go right now, and let me, let me state the, the way it is, you need to state your name, your address, and you've got two minutes to, to present.
Okay. My name is Susan Carson, I live at 120 Valentine Drive, and I would like the easement cleared so that my property doesn't flood. I've had to pay over $4,000 to remove a gar, a garage shed and a fence because the flooding has done such damage to the property. I can't use half my backyard because every time it rains really hard, it floods. I have exhibits showing exactly the house numbers and where the...
We've got that up here too, Ms.
Oh, you do?
Yes, yes, we, not that one, we've got our, our own here.
Okay, and then, you know, all I'm asking is that the easement be cleared so that the water can drain.
Yes, ma'am.
To the drain, drainage, so that my water, uh, property doesn't flood, because I can't use it.
We're, we're well aware of what the situation is there, we do, do know and realize there's a 20-foot drainage easement there on the east side of your properties.
Right.
Or in, within the east side of your properties, that runs from, from Old Pass Road all the way down to Railroad, and then proceeds south from there.
Right.
So we're well aware of what's going on there, and this is, I think this is all derived from our attempt to be able to get in and do drainage work in that area.
Right, and I appreciate it, and, and what they have done has helped a little, but it still floods.
Yeah, and, and let, let me explain to you, and the other three that's on here, Ms. McIntosh has, has entered herself on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So when it comes to her time, we will be talking to her about what she's put on the agenda.
Right.
Now, when it, it comes to these others, they'll have the same offer to you have for that two minutes.
Right, but I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted you to know that I've paid over $4,000 to clean up the mess back there, you know, I had to take down my garage and shed and fence.
That should not occur.
All right, thank you.
All right, your time's up, thank you so much. Next, we have Andrea Anderson.
Dog it. Yeah, just do that, I don't know.
My name is Andrea Anderson, I live at 114 Valentine Drive, and I'm here about the easement as well, so, we, y'all want us to, four houses to remove our fencing and all that, which was all done before we lived there. We've asked for specifically what needs to be done, because we have a concrete pad as well, and the letter, the second letter was more generic than the first letter, fences and structures. Well, am I responsible for pulling up this concrete pad that was there since the house was built, as far as I can tell from all the aerial photos I pulled, and everybody needs to be done. If it's just, it should be the whole road, not just these four houses, because we've walked the ditch, have all kinds of photos after the rain, there's no water behind my house. Now, it does, it does flood sometimes, and I will admit that, but there's no water just behind my house, so everybody, because there's everybody in that 20-foot easement.
Yes, ma'am, all right, you've still got some more time if you want to talk, I don't want to interrupt your time.
I also would like somebody to come properly mark where our property starts and ends, because nobody could tell me where. The county can't tell me where, the man that came to my house couldn't tell me where it started, he kept telling me it had 153 feet, but from where? From the road, from the curb, from the power lines, where's the start? So I feel like that needs to be done before we start taking down fences as well. That's it.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Anderson? I, I appreciate you, and, and I will answer a few of your questions now, it will be the full length of Valentine, from Old Pass all the way down to where the drainage goes on Railroad. We will have it clearly marked where the property lines are and the 20-foot easement is, completely through there. I will have to address our public works on any structures that's still there, if they're in the way of the drainage works that needs to be done, they will be removed.
Which is fine, but I don't feel like we should have to pay for it, because it wasn't done.
I don't think we asked y'all to pay for anything.
It does say it will be removed at property owner's expense.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure about that, I'll have to double check that, so we, but we will get that out, we will work on this, we will make sure that you are fully involved in what we do, and well informed in what's going on there, and I'm speaking for the board. Angie, you've got some comments?
I would like to say that I, I wish y'all would have called me as your alderman, I would have gladly gone back there with our public works department, walked it to see what exactly, I received flooding comments, but I, I really wish when y'all would have received the first letter, if somebody would have called me, that we could have clearly walked down there, see what exactly is going on, and see if there, what type of mitigation could have happened, but I have not received any phone calls.
No, you haven't, well, she's right, her yard is terrible.
Yes, and I know, I have, yes.
It is, I mean, and I got pictures of it, I have, if y'all want them, I took the whole road, all the way down, I walked the ditch.
Yes.
So if y'all want them, you can have them, but it should be everybody, the letters point out just the four houses, and that's not right, because it's terrible, the whole thing.
It should be the whole thing, like he's saying, from East Old Pass Road to Railroad, it, it's the whole.
Are y'all leaving a pond, is that what we're doing, or are we clearing it all the way out so it's gonna flow?
Clearing it all the way till, till it flows where it's supposed to go at the end.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Angie, you got anything else for?
No, I, I just wanted to say, I mean, I really wish somebody would have, would have called, so we could have worked through this.
We really didn't know it was an option. I mean, I've seen your sign, but I didn't know that just calling you was an option.
Yes, just call me, and, and we could work, work, see what could have been done before it got here, so, thank you.
Okay, all right, next we got Melissa Hilton, 112 Valentine Drive. That threw me off.
Sorry.
I'm Melissa Hilton, I live at 112 Valentine Drive, this is about the easement as well. I did want to address the fact of calling somebody, we all immediately got on the phone with who we were given to, which was?
Public Works.
Public Works. He had told us he was coming out to measure things, and to give us more clear instructions of what exactly, like I said, if our property starts five feet from the road and measures back 153, or if it's from the curb itself and measures back 153, because that is a 153 feet, because that is a difference, a lot, for our 20-foot backyards. He was very vague, we had somebody waiting for him, because I work, and as far as we can tell, nobody ever came and measured to tell us where our property begins from the curb and the road, and where it ends in the back. Like my other ones, I have concrete foundations with power running underneath them that were there when I moved into the house, I have sheds that are built back there, I have two large oak trees that are behind my fence. So when he had came, we were asking for specifics, what specifically are we doing? Are we going to have five-foot trenches in our backyard, coming 20 feet up? How is that gonna affect us later on? Are we putting culverts? He had no idea what they were doing. I questioned the oak trees, he had once mentioned, all the trees are gonna be removed, maybe not the oaks. Well, two of those big oak trees that have three feet diameters are sitting behind my fence, it's a reason I bought that place, well, my mother and me bought that place, in order for us to have the forest almost in a city. So we need specifics, where our property ends, what the drainage is, where the center of that drainage ditch is, all the way down, because we're, at this point, it's, you're gonna be responsible for paying it, and they did push it back, our original note said we had 14 days to address this, or else we will be charged with anything that had to be removed and torn down. Okay.
Two minutes is up, and I'm, I'm sorry, we understand what you're saying.
Okay.
And, and rest assured, we're gonna make sure that all the information is there. I would say right now that 30 days' notice you got, allow us time to get into this, work with our city engineer, work with our public works, and make sure that we've got everything that we need to make sure we're taking care of you, and you've got a clear understanding of what's gonna happen.
Thank you.
And how it will happen.
Thank you.
Because we, we absolutely don't want anything to disturb you, but we also got to know that we can do the drainage work as required.
Absolutely, like, like she said before too, we are, all have the mossy backyards when it rains.
Right.
It's granted, we're in the Delta, you know, I have never thought two things of it, until now, it's, it's under our dollar in order to have this cleared out for the first time, and I did want to make a note, the plat that they gave us is a preliminary plat, it was never finalized for that easement, ever, it's empty, where it says finalized and everything, it's a preliminary from 1963, the plat that they gave us.
Yes, and before that, it was what they call a prescriptive easement.
Okay.
So that means that it's a, it's a drainage easement that's there before it was planted.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
If I'm speaking correctly, counsel, yeah, I want to make sure I'm not getting into legal there. So, all right, thank you. All right, Cynthia, and I'm having trouble, Cynthia, was your last name, looks like Fuentes?
Yes.
At 110 Valentines?
Well, my name is Cynthia Fuentes, I'm living 110 Valentine Drive. I lived for 20 years there, and I know it's 10 foot for the pound, I think it's just 10 foot, now they say we have to move all of the fence to the 20 pa, 20 feet, and we have a lot of stuff in there too, like our neighbors, and for 20 years, nobody cleaned that, and we don't have any complaint about it, either was flooding, we trying to resolve the problems, we never coming in, say it to the city or something like that, but the only thing my husband say is 20 feet is too much, they can be the 10 feet, but we going to measure the pass row from the ditch they are, the, there's 153 feet, and they just left 10 feet for the draining.
We're, Ms. Fuentes, we're, we're going to, we're going to make sure that we get this right, it may not be that we need to fill 20 feet to do the drainage.
Mm-hmm.
It may be that we need 10, I don't know, I know we've got some specialized smaller equipment, this will be something that we have to work with our public works with, and with our, like I say, our engineering firm, but we're gonna make sure we get this right. We don't want to disturb you anymore, but we've got to make sure that we could drain the backyards of everybody that's being affected.
All right.
So we'll, we'll do what we can.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you for coming. All right, and then, yeah, Ms. McIntosh has, has signed up for the, the, uh, public comments, but she is on the dig, on the agenda, we will hold her till we get to agenda items. There's no more issues on the public comments, so moving forward, a mail, on the announcements, presentation, proclamation, we're gonna have to skip this, it was to recognize the Back at Bell Dance team for the 22, 24, 25 school year, unfortunately, the flu bug has hit them also, like a lot of folks, so they'll have to come back in when they're well, so we'll move forward with amendment to municipal docket, I have one, I would like to include the, the, um, resolution of the eminent domain on the property on the northwest corner of Klondike and commission.
Motion.
Second.
You got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be number 12 under new business. All right, moving forward, approved amendments, the mayor and board, March the 5th, 2025, recess and executive session, motion, a second for discussion and approval.
Motion.
You got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have planning development commission meeting, March the 13th, 2025, motion, a second for?
Motion, second.
Discussion, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I lost my spot, bear with me, um, bear with me, sorry. Ah, crap. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Gotcha.
Ah, duh, 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 duh. Under number two, new vi, new business, cert, certificate of re-subdivision, I wanted to bring that out and, and basically say, yes, it's been tabled, the applicant put in the wrong application, but I do support the approval of this, I don't think we can do it tonight, due to the fact that a mail-out wasn't done to the surrounding neighbors, but what they're bringing in is twofold for the city, number one, it gets rid of a undeveloped condo unit that's been down there for 20 years, vacant, that's the first thing, it, under one ownership, and then the second thing is, it would update the finishing of the drainage, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, that's the Troutman Basin, that, isn't that where that finishes up?
Where?
At the end of West Avenue.
Yes.
That's the Troutman Basin.
Yes, sir.
So, twofold is the city would get benefit of the reshaping of the ditch there that we were looking at bidding out at the time, so, um, I, I think, I, I don't think I have the authority to approve it tonight, council, just due to we did do a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, that's what I wanted to, just make sure and make that statement.
We're gonna, we're gonna go have pass them with them having tabled to wait till they get get the, the correct application in from...
But we had a long, lengthy discussion regarding the ditch improvements and the bidding of that at our last meeting, so I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
All right, okay. Any further discussion on this? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approved document claims number 031825, a motion, a second, discussion and approval. Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have new business, Rebecca McIntosh, Drainage Easement Issues, 108 Valentine's Drive. Ms. McIntosh, are you present? If you'll come forward and give us your name and address and speak into the mic.
Can I bring my mother up? She's on to speak with me.
I, I can't hear you. Y'all hear?
Yes.
Yes, yes, please, please. We all need a little more support.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca McIntosh. I live at 108 Valentine Drive. I am also here to discuss the easement issue with the letters that we received. My lot specifically also has a side easement, so a little bit different on that one. In the middle of that side easement, I do have a 11-foot live oak tree that should not, in my opinion, or should be preserved, excuse me, because that is one of the reasons that I also brought the property. Whereas there's no confusion on whether or not we believe that the easement exists. We know it exists, and we all want to see that it is cleaned up. We all have the drainage issues in our backyard. But I am a single mother that works a full-time job and has a full-time teenage son as well. I don't have the funds to, to move all of this stuff, so I'm asking the city for assistance on getting this moved, because we all brought the properties as-is. We brought the properties with the fences and structures in place. I have a dog. I cannot go without a fence. Okay? I have to do my right as a citizen and make sure that my dog is contained in her yard. And I do have to agree that the person that was dropping off the letters did appear to be actively avoiding the residents of the street whenever we wanted to speak with him about where we needed to do this, what needed to be done exactly, you know? How is this going to be done so that we can ensure that we are working with the city to make sure that this can, can happen?
And, and we realize that sometimes we send folks out from public works that don't have all the information that you may need. They may be just delivering, and, you know, that, that falls on us, and we'll make sure that's corrected in the future in other cases as this may come up. But we're working, you said you had a side easement, too?
I do have the side.
That runs east and west there?
Correct.
So I'm trying to get on my map here where you're located there.
I do. I am at 108, so I do have the side easement that's split with 106 next door to me.
South side of your house, okay.
South side, I know where you are now. Okay, I've got you located here.
Can't see half of this.
No, you can't see on these, oh.
I gotta do better than this.
Now, the oak, you said it's in your east-west easement?
It is, yes, sir. And there's also one in my back easement as well as my front yard. The back one is a nine-foot oak. The front yard is a 14-foot oak, but that's irrelevant to this situation.
Well, again, I will tell you, like I've told the others tonight, we will have engineering and public works work hand-in-hand on this. We'll identify all the easements. They'll be clearly marked. We'll note the trees and see if there's a route that we could make it around them without doing damage to them. In some cases, we might not be able to do that, to be perfectly honest with you and each, each others here. We don't want to damage what we don't have to.
I understand. I just, I'm afraid that if you do have to remove that side oak, it's going to devalue my property.
Right.
And...
And we understand that. You know, but the fact is that, that these are in a easement that are, you know, whether they became, came from a prescriptive easement to a, to a documented easement, it's still the responsibility of the city to make sure those are clean. It may not be that we have to go in and put a big drainage ditch through there. It may be something that we create a swell. I haven't been there personally to look at it. I don't know. And when I say a swell, it may be just a little, something that you could continue to run along more through. I'm, I'm not sure. So I will have to, I'll have engineering look at this, and they will, they will certainly develop the best possible outcome for all of us that will benefit you as far as drainage and will benefit the city to make sure drainage is done and that we can all hopefully reach a happy conclusion with this without doing any great disturbance to everybody.
And I, I understand. My only other thing is I'm gone all day at work. Like I said, I work a full-time job and I don't even get home until after 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night sometimes. How am I going to be contacted about this? Because anytime, it's always been just a letter, and I wish I would have been home because I did see that you stopped by the neighborhood the other day, and I would have loved to, to talk to you about this issue, but like I said, it's really hard to catch me during business hours because I work a full-time job.
If we could get your phone number?
Yeah, just give me your phone number.
Okay.
And then what is the expiration date on the letter? Because...
April 11th.
Yeah.
April 11th, okay. So we have time.
We, we send these letters out anytime we're getting ready to do a project like this. That doesn't mean we're going to come drop machines off and start tearing your yard out. This is just a start of a long process.
Process.
Of reviewing what needs to be done back there and slowly going from there.
Well, and to be honest, that, that sends residents into a panic whenever you give us an ended letter like that.
It 100% does. I, I agree. I mean, I do drainage for a living. It does. But that's just us starting the process. We're not just going to come drop machines and dig out your fences and take everything down without y'all knowing first.
Okay.
We, we always have to survey to make sure we've got the right, we're in the right lines. So that, that takes a while, and, and, you know, and there's, there's more contact that will be made with y'all. If you could leave, you know, if I got, you got, we've got your phone number here.
And her email.
And your email. So we will contact you both ways, and we will make sure that we can meet you at a time that's convenient to you before or after work. And if we need to, we'll be glad to pay our engineer a little overtime and our public works guy a little bit more overtime to make sure that we could, you know, meet you. And it won't be immediately. We're going to have to get in there and start looking and seeing what we've got, start looking at some, where we could start doing some surveying and such to be able to, when we meet, we're going to be able to say, say, this is where we're talking about.
Okay. It'll be appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm, again, to all of y'all, I apologize. It's very obvious we're going to have to do a little better than what we've done in this situation, and we will improve that moving forward, but we will be in touch with each of you as homeowners throughout that process. So thank you very much.
Can I make one more comment? She had a comment she didn't make as well.
Pardon me?
Can I make a comment on her behalf? There's one more thing we want to bring up. So it sounds like in most part, everyone wants the clean drainage. Right behind her house, the most southeastern corner, there is about four-foot of water currently right now, and there is 48-inch culverts coming from east-west and north-south right there, because she's at that, that point. So yes, it's, it's a major benefit, and it will definitely dry up this lady's land on the top of the street. I have been in construction for many years as well. When you get to Rebecca's home at 108, and you see the three massive oak trees, that is the value of that property. She and I have had the discussion if it is for the betterment of that community and to save the oak trees, let us know if Long Beach wants to buy the house or do what they need to do to move the house, because there's just no, those oak trees are massive and they're beautiful. So let us know what we can do to save the oak trees, better the community, but not kill us in the meantime.
First of all, we won't buy a house, won't buy a house.
I understand.
You know, that, that's not going to occur. When you buy the house, your, your closing attorney should show you on your deed documentation, your plot that has the easement there, and that, you know, we can't be at every closing for every house in the city of Long Beach. That falls back on the attorney.
That's why we have title insurance. We understand that.
Exactly right. You're exactly right. But I will assure you, we're going to do everything we can to work around this to see if we can get that without harming any trees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's rude.
All right, y'all got any thoughts, questions?
Uh-uh.
Donna?
I need a copy of those phone numbers also.
It's in your packet on the, on the sheet where she signed up. Everybody has it.
In there.
All right.
Okay, moving forward, we have banner replacement request, First Baptist Church on, for the Easter festival, and this will be in three locations, Courtney?
Yes, Railroad, Pineville.
Motion. Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have another one, banner replacement request from First Baptist Church. This will be Vacation Bible School. It'll be June the 1st through the 5th.
Motion. Second.
We got a motion, a second, same three locations, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consultant selection, Overstreet and Associates, Klondike and Pineville. This is signalization and improvements and amongst other things there, selection of Overstreet and Associates, a motion, a second.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consultant selection, Overstreet and Associates, Jeff Davis and West Railroad. Same situation.
Motion. Second.
We got a motion, a second, discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have ratify gateway bid award, Molly Construction. This was a...
Motion. Second.
We got a motion, a second, discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have contract with Sparklight Library Internet. This was a situation where the, the one that we had agreed to purchase, it was no longer available. Sparklight has agreed to, to do the improved portion. It goes, the prices are the same, nothing changed monetarily. It's just that we're getting an upgraded device.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have senior community service employment program for 2024, 2025. This is our annual agreement. This is the one where we are able to get seniors that come in and work. They're paid by SMPDD, and they work in various different departments for us. Any motion, a second, to approve this?
Second.
We got a motion, a second, discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Stringer Pier demo. I'd like to have a motion, a second, to discuss this?
Motion. Second.
A second. Randall, you're, you're here in the back. Can you come up and talk to us what this is as we have an opportunity? And, well, let, let me let Randall. Randall is, is with Andecor, a project manager for us down at the harbor. There's an opportunity for us to do some, some work that needs to be done down there.
Yeah, Randall Love, construction manager with Andecor. So in southeast bulkhead, we actually got some materials or unit prices that the contractor is not going to use, and it's been mentioned to me that, that y'all would like to see the south end cleaned up, the pier gone, and the bottom cleaned up so that individuals, citizens can fish off of the southeast bulkhead. So what I've brought to you tonight is a proposal to do just that. They will remove the Stringer Pier, haul it off and demo it, dispose of it properly, and they will clean 50-foot from the face of the southeast bulkhead from point to point so that it's, you know, basically a sandy bottom so that people can fish and crab off of it. And now that we put this bulkhead in, I mean, we're going to have like 1,200 linear feet that they can fish off of, so plenty of room for everybody. Shouldn't have to worry about it getting damaged unless it's, God forbid, another Katrina, but, you know, all bets are off then.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood. So I have checked this price out. Boyes is here in town. He's asking 32, 250, I believe. The nearest contractor I could find that would come touch it was probably going to be 50 to 60, just for the mobilization part of it. So it would be a no-cost change to the contract because we're not going to use the riprap line item that's in the contract, so we're just suggesting that we move half of that line item to this so that we can clean that up for you now and not miss opportunity. And it'd be a high storm, you know, wait another two years or God forget how long it would take till we can get back to it. So we're just kind of want to seize the opportunity.
Randall, I just got a quick question for you, just for my lack of knowledge. It says only surface concrete and debris.
He's not going to dredge. He is just going to pick up the rocks that are...
For, like I said, so it's not what I can see from the top of the water, it's just from the...
It's just from the, just the water surface to the sandy bottom. There's not, no dredging. It's just cleaning up the rocks that have been displaced by the storm.
Got it. Thank you.
I also have a question, Randall.
Sure.
They will need a time extension to 416. What's their, what's their time now with their project?
Their, their current contract expiration date was March 7th. They've submitted, on March 7th, they submitted basically 18 or 21 days of weather delays that we're still reviewing, and then this conversation came up, and they said, "We're having it all done lock, stock, and barrel by that date." So either way, they're probably going to be due some time for, you know, because it's snowed, we had some very high winds and high tides this winter that were out of...
We're thinking right now, yeah, we're thinking right now they got 15 days at minimal for weather delays.
Yes, sir.
So after 416, they go, though, if they're over that, they go back into penalty phase?
Yes, sir.
Because I mean, you know, they did...
We're not, we, yes, sir. We will never, we will never waive the liquidated damages. We're just moving the date to compensate for the additional scope and for the snow and the extreme weather days.
I'm making motion to approve.
Okay. We got a motion, second, to approve. Let me further the discussion here. We do have, what, about $64,000 that FEMA had allowed us to repair.
That's correct.
But the word is that they will not. After, if we repair it, there will be no further damage assessments that they will pay for if that is repaired. Now, by this board, we had decided to do away with that pier. The board has completely decided we're doing away with that pier. We're going to take that and use that as a mitigation, and we could maybe use that as mitigation in other areas that we've removed that.
Absolutely. We'll keep all those documentation separate, and when we go from different DDD lines, you know, we'll talk to them about what we did to mitigate future loss. We removed this. We'd like the money to do some other kind of improvement in the harbor. There'll be multiple discussions with FEMA throughout that whole process, so...
I mean, we've got the exterior walls that we're putting up, we've got the new interior wall we're putting up, and all this is a mitigating factor that we can mediate with them to gain in other areas. So, all right, any more questions for Randall? Any more thoughts? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.[1663.38]
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Randall.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah. All right, when we get to it, yeah. All right, Mr. Brown, you, landscape maintenance contract.
Okay.
Alderman Brown.
So, if you came down to the groundbreaking for the gateway project the other day, you'll see what our landscaping looks like that we are paying, let's see, we are paying one thousand six hundred. Yes, I do. One thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents a month. That's terrible. And it does say in the contract that on the weeds that they will either remove. I'm trying to read this without glasses. They'll remove their weeds by hand or by liquid herbicide. None of this is being done, so I think we have two options to either void the contract or let the public works take it over because I promise you, they can do a lot better. A lot of the, on the, on the east side in the curve there, a lot of the, they have weed eaters and they weed eat the plants down to where there's nothing and now sand's covering them. There's no pine straw, and I see where it reads that they're only allowed, or the contract only allowed to put pine straw every so often. But the cleaning process is not being done. I mean, there's vehicles down there. They're out with a weed eater for about ten minutes and they walk away. So, I think we could either avoid the contract or go to the contractor and say, you got to do a better job. That's strictly up to you.
I'll make the motion to void the contract.
Second.
Second.
Even if we go forward, we can go forward with somebody else.
Well, like the mayor said, this is about twenty thousand dollars a year. We could hire a part-time employee through the city to do this, something to this.
To add as discussion, I was contacted about two months ago, and I thought we were, at the time, we were still under contract. I reached out that there's a local landscaping firm that is willing to donate their time monthly, basically adopting one or two of the beds to keep the city's expense down on a weekly basis. So, we can, we can discuss that further. I don't know what all that entails, but, you know, there are people in the community that are willing to help.
So, on the east side, when you turn in, on the east side, you're looking at kind of this curve, but the sand has blown up and that, that looks horrible. On the, on the west side, if you walk the sidewalk, really, there's some weeds that need to be pulled. It's not as bad, but the east side, for what we're paying and what we are wanting to have done down there, we need to make a move on it.
Steve, as far as the contract goes, terminating the contract, is there a way to, if they were not upholding the end, recoup any of the money?
I don't have the contract in front of me, but most every contract that the city enters into has a right to terminate upon so many days' notice without cause. So, unless this one fails to have a termination clause in it, you're fine.
I gave you a copy.
Let me, let me ask y'all this. Can I get approval, I get a motion and second for approval to move forward with canceling this contract per review by council that it is, that is.
We've already first and seconded that, that we want to cancel. We already have a first and second to cancel.
I think the mayor's asking you to amend the wording.
Amended. Hold on, let me get to the amended part of it.
He's got the contract, I believe.
Yeah, and then to investigate further along what Alderman Fraser has offered to us through another landscape firm here, and to see with the twenty thousand dollars that we would be getting per year, you know, what, fifteen hundred dollars a month, whatever it was.
Sixteen, sixteen, six.
Yeah, that much a month, that maybe we could look at dedicating a part of that to, for supplies. If we've got somebody willing to donate time and labor, we could look at that for supplies. Can I get a substitute motion and second on this?
Motion.
Yeah, and that came from Patrick and I, yes.
So.
Patrick, you good with that?
Yeah.
I got a substitute motion and second. Further discussion, Pete?
Just, just a small little addendum. If we have a company, a local company who's willing to take that on, I firmly believe that if somebody's going to do us a solid like that, that we allow them to put some kind of signage down there courtesy of this.
Absolutely.
This is, this part of, you know, is maintained courtesy of this company so that they can get credit for doing that.
Is that in the substitute motion?
They may not want it, but.
They may not, but we're going to give them opportunity.
I'll offer it to them.
Okay. All right, we have that substitute motion and second. Do we have any further discussion? Here and now, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have tree board appointment, Alderman Caffrey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael McGill to the tree board.
Second.
I've got a motion and second to appoint Mr. Michael McGill to the tree board. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. McGill, I know I saw you here. There you are in the back. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for volunteering.
Volunteered to do that. Thank you. All right, any more discussion? Here and now, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have number twelve under new businesses. This is the resolution authorizing payment of just compensation for taking of property. This is at the corner of Klondike and Commission on the northwest corner. Need a motion and second, we're going to have to do a roll call. Got a motion and second, any further discussion? Roll call. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Nay.
Don?
Aye.
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got a five-one, motion carries. Thank y'all, and we'll move forward. Mr. Ray, we settled out. You'll get a check.
No, he can't hear. Clean up the scrap metal now.
Yeah. All right, moving forward, the department business, mayor's office. I've got some stuff that I need to discuss with you. We have been in discussion with Jennifer from Jeep in the Coast. They are, they have a ban for the week of Jeep in the Coast for a Wednesday night in another city, and they're, they're having to move out of that city, and they're wanting to come to our city and set up on a Wednesday night with a ban. Means we'd have to set up the bandstand there on Fifth Street East of Jeff Davis where we did last year. What I'm asking you to do is consider this because I'd like to have time to sit down with the police department and see what was involved with, with the, you know, the officers that would be involved, and then sit down with Jennifer to figure out if she's already made arrangements through the sheriff's department for it. And I just want y'all to be aware that this may occur. I think what I will come back, if everything works out, is to ask you to give us permission to put the bandstand, the stage down there on a Wednesday and leave it through to the Saturday night and picked up on Sunday morning. This will, you know, result in us not having to pay any extra overtime. So, that's just an FYI, a future coming up. Also, I think, I don't know if it was last meeting or meeting before, I can't recall, we talked about the pavement on Townsend Flurry Road. We really, in talking with engineer, we need to get a non-survey on that because we had some problems. We discussed that they were having problems deciding where does the yard end and the real street start. So, we've got, we've got a cost estimate of five thousand dollars. David, does this including everything there on that that we'd have to establish the points of the street, the width, the length of it, the pavement areas that we'd have to pave?
That, that will be to locate Townsend Flurry from the intersection at Daughtry Road and working east to the end of that, of that right of way. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'm going, I'm going to ask, ask for a motion and second for discussion on this now and approval if it be there. So, if I could get a motion. You got a motion and second for discussion. All right, let's just.
I think, I think we've all agreed this road needs to be paved, and we're going to have to get the survey. So, that's my motion to go and approve the five thousand to get a proper survey.
Okay. So, that'd be a substitute motion, because I've just brought it back up for discussion. So, we got a substitute motion to approve the five thousand for the survey and move forward. We got that second.
Discussion, being that this is paving, does this come out of, do we know if it would come out of roads and bridges fund? Yes.
It should.
It should. We're surveying for the paving.
I'm good with it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, I want to go discuss Middle Mitchell. We had approved paving, drainage and widening there. I don't know if we've got estimates on piping yet. I think Public Works is going to be doing that. Mike, you have, have estimates on piping and boxes that may be, or do you have that in front of you, or can you?
I gave that to you a few weeks ago.
We've looked at all that.
Well, I want to, I want to make sure before we move forward.
I've got the pipe in. I should be moving in this week, starting on that.
All right, and that's, that's going to include the piping under Lover's Lane from Middle Mitchell to North Mitchell on the west side.
But I have that price, yes.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we're all still on the same page on that. All right. We, huh? Toll road, yeah. The harbor, I've been talking to Harry about the harbor. We still have old pedestals that were removed before Hurricane Zeta. That was the year we, Zeta was the fifth time we removed them that year from threats of storms. Zeta took, and so we still got these old pedestals left. And I would like to get them declared surplus property for the next sale that the police department has or is involved in, or the fire department, or any city sale that we have to sell surplus property. I'd like to get, I think we've got a count of a hundred and fifty, maybe, maybe a few more. They're totally useless to us. We cannot use them anymore. If, you know, the first four times we were able to pull them and put them back in, they were still useful. The fifth time, they're no, no longer useful. Once we get our, our slips rebuilt, we're going to have to have newer, new bases with a higher, it's going to be higher up where the pedestal starts. So, I would like to, to get that and find out when the next ones, it's just a FYI on this.
Do you know when the next meeting is?
I do not, but I'll find out. I'll call and find out.
I have a quick question. I know when we sell surplus, we have to do it a certain way, but being that this is electrical and I don't know if there's any copper in there, can we weigh the, the difference between what we could get for scrap and what we could sell it for at?
I think we've asked, Harry and I have talked about that, that we may, that it may come down to that. But I will be perfectly honest, you got a hundred and fifty of them, you got to get everything out to get to the copper. We may, we may pay more manpower.
Understand. Yeah, and that's why I was just saying.
That was one of the things that we had discussed, so, yeah.
As long as we've addressed that.
There's a good question, you know the answer to.
As long as we have addressed it, you know, looking at the pros and cons.
And we're not sure how many copper is in there. Griff, you may know a little bit more based on.
I'm not familiar enough with them to say.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll tell you what we'll do. We will get one, look at it. And if it's got copper in it, we'll estimate what it takes to get it out and see if it's a value to us.
Yeah.
You have to get it out, it's probably better just to sell it.
You're probably right, but just want to overlook, I want to.
I got to be honest, I doubt it's copper.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking the same thing.
Expect the value of it as, as a sale.
Correct.
We'll, we'll get one and have it next time and hopefully we'll have a date of the surplus property sale. So, it's another FYI. The last question I have under my head is, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April the first, that is election day. Would y'all considering recessing this meeting tonight, tonight and reconvening on April the second, Wednesday night at five o'clock?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
We'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, I'll do that at the end. I'll bring it up. I just want to make sure while it's on my mind. And that's all I have. Next, we have personnel, police department, donation and leave and reinstatement. And I would like to pull the donation of leave out of the police department and discuss separate. We have a reinstatement, and the fire department, we have proficiency pay, promotion, and the building department, we have step increase. I will take all of those with exception to donate leave.
Motion.
I have a question.
Second.
Second discussion.
And discussion. Under FTO and CTO, what is, what is CTO?
Communications Training Officer. So, FTO is a field training officer. Those are the officers that train the officers out in the field, and a CTO trains new dispatchers.
Okay, I've just not seen that.
Proficiency pay threw us all off. Never heard of it. Always.
Big words.
Yes, big word for small minds.
All right. Any more discussion? Here and now, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Now, we want to bring up this donation leave. I'd have an entertaining motion and second for approval discussion. Discussion?
So, on this sick time, correct me if I'm wrong, they, aren't they allowed or don't they have to do, use all their sick time and this FMLS?
FMLA.
FMLA and everything?
So, I know they have to use all their sick time, vacation time, comp time, anything that they have used up before going into FMLA.
So, my, my question is, is this legal for us to do this? Mr. Counsel, thank you.
As I sit here right now, it sounds, I'll, I'll read what, what the, our handbook says, but I suspect from what the officer's saying, you've got to exhaust all that other remedy before you can use donated time.
And that, and that applies to? Chief, is that, are you still on board? I mean, I haven't read that in five years.
I'm certain that you can't use donated time from someone else and save vacation time or pay leave. You cannot do that.
Cannot do that.
You got to exhaust whatever other leave is out there before you could use donated time.
So, could we maybe, I hate to do this, but table this until we get a better clarification of if everything's been used?
Yeah, if you would, till the next meeting, I'll give you the handbook and employment rule that says that.
And could, could we get a clarification from her or from you guys that she's exhausted everything?
Yeah, I will.
Careful with.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
From the one receiving, from the one receiving.
I just want to make sure we're doing this. I have no problem with doing what is asked, but I want to make sure it's legal.
Before our next meeting, if we know.
I don't believe so. I think this is sort of a preemptive thing, knowing that she's going to be out for an extended amount of time.
Does this employee have enough time to meet it to it? And if not, can counsel look at it and send it to me, and then I can send it out board for email approval and ratified the next meeting?
Absolutely. It's not going to be needed until after April third.
This is, according to the notes, according to the notes, it's not effective until June.
So, we'll, we'll take this up. We will direct, I will make contact through the police department to, to the employee and so to let this employee know what is, what's going on, that there's no opposition to it. We just got to get a, a legal standpoint before we can move forward.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a substitute motion to table, please?
Yeah, substitute motions.
Motion.
This is to table until the next meeting till we can qualify and clarify legal aspects of this. All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have.
Case.
I thought we did that.
I already did that. That was inclusive.
We reinstated him on the, on the first one, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. All right, next, we have under department business, city clerk, we have a revenue and expense report, February twenty twenty-five, a motion and a second.
Motion.
Discussion, here and now, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have supply and maintenance plan agreement, RJ Young City Hall printers. Motion and second for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
This doesn't conflict with any of the stuff we're doing with RJ, AJ, that company?
No, this is separate. This is.
This is your printer.
Printers, and these are our big copy printers.
Don't want to double pay.
Yeah, okay. Did I get the motion and second?
Yes.
You did. Yes.
Did I call for a vote on it?
No, sir.
All right, I did or didn't?
Did not call.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, next, fire department chief, you have anything?
No, sir, not tonight.
Thank you. All right, police department, we've got a memorandum of understanding, insight, LPR, license plate recognition. Motion and second for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. So, in your packet, the police department was able to reach out to the company. I had some questions about sharing data, and this is, this is a letter from their legal department. Just making us aware that they do not share with any private companies the information. I just wanted that for our minutes.
Yeah, this is not a license reader to write tickets and mail to her mail. It's nothing new.
Or for finance companies or anything like that. This.
Yeah, it's strictly law enforcement that has been being used.
Correct.
By the city of Long Beach for a number of years in conjunction with other municipalities and the county and the state and other states.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have interlocal agreement, Harrison County Narcotics Task Force. This is basically a bookkeeping. What this is is allows us to establish a member with Harrison County Task, Task Force to be involved with their drug task team, narcotics team. This is a continuation of what we have ongoing. Now, we have one or two involved in this.
We have two.
We have two, yeah.
Now, one, one with this group particular, the other one is with the DEA.
DEA group, yeah. So, this is, this is, like I said, it's, it's basically a bookkeeping situation.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we got the motion and second. Any further discussion? Here and now, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have engineering. We have opera and McQuie funding, corrective action. Motion and second for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, discussion. David, will you clarify what you have written here? I think this is basically a bookkeeping to meet the criteria that's set forth by the state for us to get our reimbursement for some projects we've done already.
That's correct. The, as y'all are.
The, as y'all are aware, the state granted funding through the ARPA and MICWE program, and most of those projects, in fact, I think all of them were projects that the city had already completed. And so when they give those grant funds, then they also said that these grants have to meet these grant requirements. And, and some of those we've been able to correct, and, and some of them not. These two in particular, you note there, Project 606 and 609, need some corrective actions. And basically, I mean, obviously, you may need your city attorney or someone to draft these policies up that would, really the corrective action appears to be, you should adopt policies that would meet these grant requirements for your future procurements, construction procurements or anything like that. That's the, the gist of the corrective action. And then the risk letter is a letter that basically advises, if you request reimbursement for these projects that have deficiencies, like the, the need for corrective action, if you request reimbursement, there could be a risk of clawback. It's just really an advisement that that could happen, so.
Right. And without these, two things here that we're looking at, we're, we're not even into the, to the game of getting reimbursement.
That's right. The reimbursements cannot continue until these policies have been adopted.
All right, counsel, you got any thoughts on that?
Other than as David suggests, we prepare and adopt the policies that would satisfy ARPA and the funding requirements so that we don't be exposed to any clawback problems.
So we go ahead and do it for now, that will, will cover us for this and any future.
David, do I, do I understand these are for future procurement applications for participation or for these two that we have pending?
I think that the, the policy should probably be for future procurements subject to, that may be subject to ARPA or MICWE funding, although we may have, we may need a, a formal procurement policy for, for any purchases, although I know we have a policy that we follow. We follow the state's guidance. In these particular projects, there were some extra requirements that aren't part of our normal policy. So I would think it's for the, for any future procurements is what they're really looking for.
Yeah. This will cover us on both.
Yes, sir.
This that we're speaking to and, and then the, the future.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So those, those items that they're wanting us to do, we do not have in procurement now, can those be put in for us to adopt at the next meeting?
If that policy could be prepared, I think that, that...
Or, or here in the near future, let me say it that way.
Yes, sir, I think, I think the city could, could draft a policy, and you guys could review it and adopt that at any, any meeting that it's available at.
What specifically are they asking? What policy?
That's a, that's a tall order. I mean, the grant requirements are extensive. I think you may be better off...
They appear in their letter to direct us to a, a site that would provide a checklist by, from FEMA that we have to...
Keyword.
Acknowledge and incorporate into a policy. Yeah.
Uniform administrative requirements.
And it's an auditing group that's looking at how these government programs are run, so they're the ones that are saying you need to make sure that you have policies. So this is just a, a standard that we need to have policies in place for these contracts per the, the administration team.
They also direct us to a manual, county purchase clerk manual that the office of the state auditor publishes that is a resource for the, for the policies.
Right, for making the policies.
I would, I would offer too, I just noticed this, or was reminded that the, the letter does say that reimbursement can't continue until you acknowledge your intention to adopt these policies. So it may be if, if you direct, you know, that we want to do this, that the minutes of that meeting could suffice to continue reimbursements.
All right.
Write policy.
All right, need a substitute motion to approve this and to write...
To, to...
Acknowledge.
Write and adopt a policy.
I'll second Mikey's.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, to, we're, in the future, we're saying we're going to write this, and then we're going to adopt it.
Adopt the policies.
Yes, that's my motion.
No, I'll second it, yes, sir.
This is what it's, this is the acknowledgement form right here on the back, so we're just, the motion is to...
Yeah, page three.
All right.
Yeah, there's two of them we need to sign in here, I think.
It's in the taxes.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of signs, so. Okay, that's the motion in second. We have any, the substitute motion second. We have any further discussion on this? Here and now? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a change order. I want to pull this change order. I've been talking to, to David and Randall. We feel like there's some, some other funding there that needs to be looked at, and so we'll bring this back up to the next meeting when they get, you know, this is going to be a cost, cost savings funding that will be, you know, it's, it's not often you get a change order that's going to save you money, but this one's already saving us money. We think there's more there, so we want to get total clarification on that, so I'm, I'm pulling that till the next one. Public Works, David, did you have anything else before I slip away from you there?
I don't believe so. I think we're good.
Okay. Public Works, Mike.
Only thing I got is later this week, we're going to be starting on Middle Mitchell with the, there, so traffic will be impeded a little bit there.
Okay, all right, we'll make sure, you know, we coordinate with, with Courtney on that to get that information out, because we'll have to coordinate with the school, the, you know, fire police and, and other services that we have that's going on, so. All right, you got anything else?
That's it.
All right. And Bob is out on recreation. He's working on some other things here. You got anything that he might have mentioned to you from recreation? All right, building code office, Mike?
Two things.
Two things.
First off, just for y'all's knowledge as a board, Hotel Whiskey's going to be setting up their forms to pour their slab between now and, he said April the 4th, but it could be through the following week. But they're going to be covering that sidewalk on 4th, and we, I've already talked to Public Works about some barricades to set up on either end of that and block it off so they can't get to it. It's only going to be for a week, just to let y'all know, if y'all hear anything from anybody, so y'all know what's going on.
Thank you.
Secondly, can I make a comment on the Valentine?
Yes.
Right. The four people that were speaking here, I spoke to all four of those people, one via phone call, the lady at 110, face to face with Chris Hull that morning of probably the 5th or the 6th, and then the other two ladies that afternoon by myself at 12 and